Good and gracious God, as we enter the new year, we wholeheartedly thank you for the countless blessings you have poured over each of us in the LaFouche Parish School District. May all of us who gather here tonight continue to spread your word and do your will here tonight throughout the entire year. Grant us the ability to work together as well as the divine wisdom to make the decisions that benefit the district as a whole. Allow us to lead with integrity and give us the humility to ask for your guidance when needed. Let this new year also bring about a new resolve within each of us to put the needs of our employees, students, and constituents ahead of our own. Bless our community and allow us to grow together in faith, hope, and love. In addition, we ask you here the special intentions inside of our hearts for someone near and dear to us, but you grant them peace, strength, and guidance needed to get through this demanding time in their life. We ask all of this through your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Babin?
Here.
Ms. Sullston?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Fatida?
Here.
Dr. Bro?
Here.
Dr. Deah?
Here.
Ms. Boujwa?
Here.
Mr. Tyler Dufresne?
Here.
Mr. Schwest?
Here.
Mr. Deplanis?
Here.
Mr. LaFon?
Here.
Mr. Archer?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Do I have a question? To approve of working center agenda, A, approve of working center agenda items, B, minutes of regular school board meeting held December 4th, 2019, C, minutes of public meeting and formal mail December 17th, 2019, D, superintendent's quarterly report for the period of October 19th through December, excuse me, October 2019 through December 2019, and E, proclamation observances in the schools, 1, school board recognition month, January 2020, Black History Month, February 2020, and National School Counseling Week, February 3rd through the 7th of 2020. To have a motion, motion by Mr. Tyler Dufresne, second by Ms. Tina Babin, is there any discussion amongst the public? Any discussion amongst Mr. Henry, I know we have you in, would you like to hand vote?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, Mr. Henry, do you agree? That makes it 15 unanimous votes. Three, new business, eight to introduce new administrators, Mr. Jared Martin.
So we have two new principals with us tonight. We have both Ms. Lisa Boujwa and Ms. Casey Sherry, so I'd like to introduce both of them to the board in no particular order. We have Ms. Lisa Boujwa, please introduce yourself.
Mr. Martin, members of the board and supervisory staff, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve as principal at Racine Upper Elementary School. Twenty-two years ago, I got my first full year of teaching job at Racine Upper Elementary School. And going back there just makes me so excited about the opportunities that I have moving forward. I've worked with fantastic leaders over the years, including a lot of people here that are supervisors today, even members in the audience, and I hope to take a little bit of what everyone has given me and use the best of what I've seen and give all I have to the staff of Racine Upper. So I thank you very much for your, you know, for your confidence.
And Ms. Casey Sherry?
Good evening. Thank you so much, Mr. Martin, and all of you for giving me this opportunity. I am so excited to work with the staff, students, and parents there at Racine Lower. It's all very new. This week has been an awesome week. The staff has been so welcoming, the students, it has just been so exciting this week. So I'm looking forward to helping Racine Lower achieve their greatest potential, and thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. I'm over there on my field board. Ms. uh...
I just want to say that I told Casey that even though she's in that office, it will always be mine. But I'm excited to see both of them in the Racine area.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Anybody else would like to make comments? Mr. Thomas Dufresne?
Congratulations to Ms. Lisa Boujwa again. I have to say she was a real mentor to me at Central when I was there. She chose me to be the PLC leader that year, and she really helped me find my way around the classroom. So I just want to thank you for all the support you've offered me, and this is truly well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dufresne. Any further comments from the board? If not, we'll move on. B, to consider the request from Tivito Express to waive the use of facility fees associated with the school usage gym. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Barry Blazos, second by Ms. Mary Fatida. Do I have any comments from the audience? I have Mr. Brian Rose as listed as far as possibly speaking tonight, or does somebody else would like to possibly speak?
I'll speak on behalf of the Tivito Express. My name is Matthew Worey. I recently had the opportunity by three else to meet Mr. Brian Rose. I've known Tragman's brother. He's the assistant director to the Express for years. Simple issue I've approached recently in this year, the problem that has arisen is based off the use facility form, the interpretation of $600. They go to practice this year to have tryouts, and they're told that every use of the gym will be $600. Not for profit, for practice. That is simply unsustainable, unrealistic, and here's the problem with it. When you really sit down with these guys, this has been an operation for how long now?
This is year number 23.
Year number 23. Fifty-five, sixty-five kids, right? These kids sometimes don't get to go five miles outside the radius. The educational value beyond the discipline taught to all these youngsters supported by all these people is this close from going, completely down the drain. The problem is, these guys are coming out of pocket for every tournament. They're paying six months, excuse me, out of six months out of the year, three of those weekends of the month, they're gonna have a tournament. $600 per use of three practices per week, translated over a month, is $2,400, which totals 14,4 for the year of practice only. These guys sometimes have to buy toothbrushes, deodorant, they have to house these kids, and the educational value they're getting, last year going to the Civil Rights Museum, the opportunity of Amique Robinson, who's gonna be a high NFL draft pick, you know when the first time you ever saw New Orleans was? With the Tivito Express, in sixth grade. We take that for granted over here, right? Well, I love to travel, and the reason is because it's educational. This isn't just about basketball. This is about direction, it's about discipline, and it's from their heart. If they lose this program, which they will if they initiate any $600 fee per practice, that's disruptive, not just in here to the parish as a whole. This is their way out. This is the discipline needed. A lot of these guys look up to these guys, these kids look up to these guys, it's fallen figures that they don't have. So, the other concern that we had here, insurance, is they've been vetted. We've spoken to Mr. Martin. Barry, thank you for navigating me to this table right now. It's my first experience with the school board. Mr. Henry, I would have bothered you had I known you were gonna be here, but what we really are asking are to have the fees waived. This is extremely important. My firm is gonna sponsor the one tournament they have a year. It's been historically said that every tournament they have, which is only one, at Tivito High, they use three gyms that pay $600 per gym. We'd be more than happy to write a check to you for $2,000 on behalf of Tivito Express to maintain that one tournament. There'll be no other for-profit tournament there, no other games outside of a practice. Those practices go six miles, three times a week. We're simply here and begging respectfully to waive those fees and let this continue, the tradition of the Express continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worey. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak?
I would like to speak.
Yes. Can you just state your name?
My name is Carlos Tillman. When you look at the tradition of the Tivito Express organization, last year alone, the guy that brought the state championship to Tivito High School was kids out of that Tivito Express organization. So I'm here tonight to ask that y'all continue letting this organization be a part of Tivito. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Anybody else with any further comments from the audience? Thank you for the two gentlemen who did speak up. Any board comments? Ms. Fatida?
I really respect this organization and what they have done for our students. At least, the students that are there are our students, and I think that we, any opportunity that we can provide for them out of the classroom is something that we as a board need to decide to do for them. And with that being said, I definitely support waiving the fee for practice because, you know, where else will they practice? The tournament, if Worey and, Mr. Worey and his group are going to pay for it, then I can understand we'll have that fee covered. So with it being vested for the insurance, I see no reason why as a board we shouldn't support this movement.
Thank you, Ms. Fatida. Mr. Blazos?
I'd like to thank Mr. Worey. We've talked back and forth quite a bit about it, and everything it is right. Of course, I'm gonna back this up. But anything that we could do to keep our kids off the streets and have good, you know, a good organization to be part of, this is something I'm always gonna back. And I think the deal is very fair to waive the fees for practices and for that one tournament to charge. I have no problem with that. I mean, it's just the right thing to do, so.
Thank you, Mr. Blazos. Ms. Thomas?
Hey, Mr. Worey, for putting the agenda on the island, I want to thank Mr. Brian Rose for his untired, unresentless work that he does with the children in the community, and it's a good thing that he's doing for this community. And he has shown a lot of kids a lot of things that, as they said before, they would never get to see. And this is something that we actually need. And as taxpayers, their parents are taxpayers, and so I think that this should be waived for, just for that fact.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Any further questions? Mr. Bernard?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Mr. Worey. Your presentation was outstanding. You really and truly set the stage for us hopefully approving your request.
And hopefully to do more in the future.
Sure. Yeah, it's quite understandable. It's my understanding, it would be for the practice and liabilities taken care of as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other discussion amongst board members? Ms. Archer?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to echo the sentiments of Mr. Blazos, Ms. Fatida, as well as Ms. Bernard, for the great outstanding work that's being done, and hope it continues to take place. Thank you very much.
Any further, Ms. Babin?
I also want to echo what everyone has to say, and I want to add that it's really, it makes it really easy for us to make decisions when all the information is presented to us properly before. So thank you very much. Thank y'all for all the job, and this is a really great experience.
Thank you.
Ms. Boujwa?
I'd say it's a good day when we can do things for the community and our students, especially, as Ms. Fatida said. And I agree with Ms. Babin. It's nice, it's easy to make a decision when all the facts are laid out for you. So thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Rose, for a great organization.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dufresne?
We often ask, you know, for people to step up and be change agents, change agents in our community and role models in our community. And I think to find that, all we have to do is look at you and the other gentlemen and women that have stepped up to serve as true role models for our students and our community. So thank you for fighting on their behalf and ensuring that their future will be a bright one. You could have easily said, oh, we can't afford it, it's done. But you've decided to take the leadership and the responsibility to come before us, and I thank you for doing that, so we can help you out as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dufresne. Any further comments from the board? I'd like to say it's welcome to see an organization with the successes that you've said you've had, and it's valid by the population that turned out tonight, the community area, and the participants that are here. We have community members, business leaders, children as well. So thank y'all for coming. It's beautiful to see y'all stand together as a group, and thank you, Mr. Worey, for being there to present, and Mr. Rose as coach. They said that Tivito High members were AAU members. I'm sure you were very well proud when that moment came to light. So congratulations. Mr. Bernard?
With that said, I'd like to make a motion.
Absolutely.
And the motion would read that Tivito Express be waived the use of facility fees associated with school gym usage as it pertains to practice. Would that be...
Mr. Bernard motions. Ms. Valerie Boujwa seconds. Again, is there any further comment from the community? Any further comment from the board? If not, we'll vote. And vote for this one. All in favor of waiving the fees for practice usage? Voting is unanimous? Motion passes.
Well done, y'all. You're doing your homework.
Ms. Fatida, you want to restate that so we can all hear? I know there's a little bit of...
No, I just wanted to say that I had talked about how, you know, how proud I am of the man that he turned out to be. And I've taught certain really good students in my years at Tivito, and they have come to show us what they, what they're doing as adults. We can't see so much.
We very, very appreciate you. Thank you, Ms. Fatida.
Sorry, all that you don't know.
Okay. C, to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution ordering calling for a special election to be held in the consolidated school district number one of the Parish of LaFouche, the state of Louisiana, for school purposes to authorize the levying of a sales and use tax, therein making the application to the State Bond Commission in connection therewith and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Tyler Dufresne, second by Mr. Joey Deplanis. Is there any discussion? I do have Mr. Jason Akers.
Okay, thank you, members of the board. I'm Jason Akers. I'm with Olin Udel, with your bond counsel. So the resolution before you is actually calling the election that you announced that you were going to consider at the last meeting. It would call an election for a parish-wide sales tax of one-half of one percent to be placed on the May 9th ballot. That is a general election ballot. I'm not sure at this time whatever else in the parish is going to be on the ballot, but you will be on a parish-wide ballot on that day. The proposition as it's presented, assuming it's approved by the voters, would then carry the force of law, which means that it can only be used for those purposes that are contained within the proposition. And in this case, that's dedicated and used exclusively and solely for paying salaries and benefits for teachers and other personnel employed by the school board. So I want to note that this is not general fund dollars. These aren't things that you can take and use for other purposes. It's solely for paying salaries and benefits of your teachers and other personnel that you employ. And it further includes a raise for those teachers and other personnel as stated within the proposition. With your approval of the resolution tonight, we'll make the application with the State Bond Commission and the Secretary of State, and assuming approval there, which we expect would happen, this would appear on the May 9th ballot, and that would require the affirmative vote of the majority of those voting at the election, not the majority of those that are registered, but the majority of those voting at the election. For approval, if it's approved, it would take effect on July 1st of this year, so when your next fiscal year starts, you would actually start receiving funds late August, early September with respect to the tax levy. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about it or engage in any discussion that you'd like to do further, but thank you very much for letting us continue to be involved in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Akers. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Akers?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any further comment from the, from the public? Is there any board comment regarding this agenda item? Ms. Fatida?
It's been a long time coming. We've been working on this for over two years, and we just, you know, ask, and we're hoping, we're asking the public to support it. We are in dire need of keeping our wonderful teachers that we have and attracting more because we'll never, we have to maintain our A status and continue to be third, hopefully move up. So I am so excited, as I'm sure everybody in this community is.
Can you, Ms. Fatida? Anybody else like to comment from the board? Mr. Dufresne?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say again, thank you to Mr. Jared Martin and his team for their extraordinary work on this tax proposal, as well as Mr. Jason Akers. Thank you for the time you've invested in this. I think the public will support this because they know exactly where everything is gonna go, and it's gonna go directly to all of our employees, which will then again directly correlate to student achievement in the classroom, which is why we're all here today. So thank you all so very much for your hard work and continued attention.
Any, Mr. Dufresne? Any further comments? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Henry, you voted, yeah, correct. So, and voting is unanimous? Fifteen. Motion passes. D, to consider filling the vacancy. D, to consider filling the vacancy on the advisory committee of the LaFouche Parish School Board created by the resignation of Robbie Gisfler, beginning January 19, 2020 through December 31, 2020, in accordance with policy, BBC Board Committee. Please be reminded that at least one member from each area of the parish, North, Central, and South, shall be elected to serve on this advisory committee, along with the president and the vice president, with no more than two representatives on the committee elected from one area. Choosing a current representation of two North representations being president and vice president, we will only accept nominations from the Central and Southern areas. Do we have any nominations to fill the advisory committee vacancy?
I nominate Tyler Dufrin.
Ms. Cheryl Thomas nominates Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Do we have any further nominations? Ms. Mary Fatida?
Yes, Mrs. Valerie Boujwa.
Ms. Mary Fatida nominates Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Both are from the central position, so both were qualified. Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? I'm gonna ask one more time, any further nominations from the board? Nominations are now closed. We will do ballot voting. Please complete the ballot form and pass it back when you are done. Clyde Deplanis III counts his vote for Val Bourgeois. Ms. Valerie Bourgeois casts her vote for Ms. Valerie Bourgeois. Dr. Dennis Keah cast his vote for Val Bourgeois. Rick Huddleston cast her vote for Tyler Dufresne. Cheryl Thomas cast her vote for Tyler Dufresne. Mr. Barry Blazos cast his vote for Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Mary Bro, Dr. Mary Bro cast her vote for Valerie Bourgeois. Mr. Troy Dufresne cast his vote for Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Mr. Randy Schwest cast his vote for Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Mr. Al Archer cast his vote for Valerie Bourgeois. Ms. Mary Fatida cast her vote for Valerie Bourgeois. Mr. Ray Bernard cast his vote for Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Ms. Tina Babin cast her vote for Valerie Bourgeois. Mr. Tyler Dufresne cast his vote for Mr. Tyler Dufresne. And Mr. Henry LaFon cast his vote for Mr. Tyler Dufresne. The vote has been counted, and Ms. Valerie Bourgeois received seven, and Mr. Tyler Dufresne received eight. Therefore, Mr. Tyler Dufresne has been elected to the Advisory Board Committee for the year of 2020. Welcome to the advisory. E, to discuss board attendance at the LSVA Annual Convention on February 16 through February 18, 2020, in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and take appropriate action. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Fatida, second by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? Ms. Dr. Bro?
This is something that we have not been attending any conventions, LSVA, since we are... This is something that we have not been attending any conventions, LSBA, since we were not members. Currently, we voted to, again, be members of LSBA. LSBA provides professional development for board members. As a board member, having been to LSBA on my previous term, there's a lot to learn. There's a lot going on in the state. Louisiana School Board Association provides professional development opportunities for school boards. So when we were not a member, we were not afforded those opportunities. There was even an experience at the end, when we had just gotten out of LSBA and some of us wanted to still participate, we were not allowed to because we were not members. So I feel like it is something that we lost opportunities for professional development and learning, that now we are back as members of LSBA. So I would like to see us who can attend some of the professional development to be able to do that. It appears that our financial state is better than what it was in the past. And so I think it would be a positive for us and our district to be able to continue to know the currency of what's going on with school boards as far as legal and academics. You know, it's a wide variety of topics that are covered. So I believe that it is something that we need to get back into. We have nine new board members, and I think this would be of benefit to them as well as the returning of board members if they so choose to participate.
Thank you, Dr. Bro. Mr. Benard?
I understand what you're saying, but my only concern is that only last month I brought up to this board that we're withdrawing membership in the Louisiana School Board Association. And at that time, there was much discussion as to whether we should join because of the expenses. And in fact, there were several members of the audience that spoke against us actually joining that membership. In that motion, in that policy change, it was also approved that mileage and expenses for that particular conference or any conference would be at the behalf of the board members attending. So what has changed since that time? Only a month, that would now allow our board to assume those expenses. Don't get me wrong, I think it's good, I really do, but this is a change in policy. And I think that we need to at least justify this change from membership going into the expense mode of the board picking up those expenses. Are we saying that those expenses would be picked up by all fifteen members? The board would pick up the expenses for all fifteen members? Or selected members? Or what? I'm not exactly sure what process that is intended by this particular motion. But as I said, that was my concern, or the fact that things, to my knowledge, have not changed that much. I'm for, but I just want to know what has changed in the opinion of this board, since we had such a, not heated discussion, but several discussions among our membership as far as the expenditure of monies.
Ms. Fatida?
I am really in favor of the board being able to go to LSBA. I know that the professional development that you receive, and they're not all about the networking with all of the other board members around the state, we get good ideas. And I understand what Mr. Benard is saying, that this is definitely a change, there would have to be a change in policy. I think that the negativeism that came from the people that were in the audience were people who were former board members who voted to get out of LSBA. So that wasn't really a true picture of, you know, what the, you know, everybody is thinking. I think maybe what I would like to see happen is that those members that would like to go, and besides, we get our professional development points that LSBA collects for us because we have to receive, new board members have to receive more points than the more, their units or whatever they're called, than people that have been on the board. Also, you get a chance, they have to not only just do your, what's it called, with the ethics training, you actually are training with people that, the lawyers that do the ethics training. So there's so many benefits to belonging and being there. I would like to propose that for those people that want to go, that maybe the board could look at paying the registration fee. Because it's, and then everybody would be on their own to pay if they want to drive back and forth. You know, we said, you know, you wouldn't pay mileage, you wouldn't pay meals, you won't pay hotels. So I'm just proposing that if you want, that the board maybe, that the possibly pay the registration fee for those that want to attend, and then the board members absorb the other expenses.
Can you, Ms. Fatida? Mr. Archer?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate Ms. Fatida's comment as well as Mr. Benard in reference to the board and the LSBA. Having served on this board for good years, I can appreciate both sides. The last administration, we agreed to cut back our stipends and everything else. The concerns that I'm receiving from the community, as well as myself, I was one of the ones who had voiced my concerns about joining this LSBA. And I put a lot of thought, I went ahead and decided to do that. And stopping at that point, we receive a monthly stipend, I feel so we can support our own way at this point. I don't feel the board is going to plan to stipate right now to be a character on. If you want to go, you got a monthly stipend, save up, pay your way, and enjoy. And I will not support the board paying for any expense at all. Thank you.
Can you, Mr. Archer? Mr. Benard?
I know that we're required, all of us are required, six hours of training and instruction annually. Okay? And that includes new board members and us as well, starting, I guess, with sneaker in January. If in fact, we don't go to a conference, will we be able to pick up those six hours as far as in-service training is concerned? What do we have on the ballot there that would allow us to pick up those six hours of training?
We have to create it, and I know, I'm looking at Mr. Martin, I know that was very cumbersome amongst Ms. Quinn's efforts in coordinating and communicating with LSBA if anything goes out. She didn't run into any roadblocks at that point, but once we were not members of LSBA, it became very, the communication became a little different with LSBA, and what would or would not count in regards to professional development hours. But it's not that we couldn't do it, it's just, it was something that Ms. Quinn unadded responsibility of Ms. Quinn's and just issued to create those, which does cost money and funding.
But those that do not attend the conference, will there still be the opportunity to pick up those six hours as in-service?
Yes, we're going to have to provide. Ms. Thomas?
So the older board members have been to this conference, am I correctly saying that?
Yes.
And so far as us paying the stipend, from what I read, the application fee is $350. The old board cut our stipend to 400 without our vote before we came in. So, which wasn't fair, because it should have been put on this board that came in to cut the stipend or not. I think the new board members, I think the board should pay for them. Because they have never attended this before, and this is something that as a new board member, this is a professional training, that all of y'all saying, sitting here saying that we need, that we have never attended. So why should we have to pay for it? I can see the older, other board members paying for it because y'all have been, but this is our professional judgment. This will teach us how to function as a board, look at other boards, and this will help your new board member.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Benard?
Let me just say, I want to echo a little bit, as new board members, if you get 16 hours of your first year and then make your regular six hours annually, then you can become what is known as a distinguished school board member. But to get those extra hours, conferences would obviously have to be part of that in your first year on this board. So I understand what you're saying, and this will give you an outlet to be able to accumulate more than the six hours that is required.
Ms. Fatida?
Well, but, and I agree with you, you took the words out of my mouth, that our stipends have been cut for a savings to the board. But it's every year, it's not just because you've been that we don't need to attend because it's different every year. You have different topics, you have different legislative issues that are brought forth. So it's really important that every board member attends. So because it's so different, you know, because there's too many different topics. So I can appreciate what you're saying, but I can also see where I think that all board members need to do that.
Yes.
And I do agree with you, all board members should attend. But I'm saying the board should pay for the new board members. And if the old, if the older board members want to go, maybe they could just pay y'all fees, or you could pay for yourselves. But this is something that we have never been to. You have been to many of these conferences when the board paid for it.
But my stipend was cut also, and at that time...
I understand that, but you had been to these conferences before. We had never attended one.
But the issues are different each time, so anyway.
Okay. Mr. Lafon?
As to you, Ms. Quinn. And I guess probably actually one of the one I would even have an opinion. First of all, I can't believe that, I'm a lawyer as well, that you, we would be a board and not be a member of a state board association. I can't, I can't believe that, ever. Because I think that's important. And I also know how the community is concerned with expenses and things of that nature. That's why, although I agree with Ms. Thomas, I think Ms. Fatida has a good compromise, where we can pick up the registration. And look, and some board members might want to just pay for it themselves. And if they want to submit an invoice for their registration, they can, and they may not. But I think Ms. Fatida is presenting a good compromise, where the board can pick up the registration fee. And how long is the conference? And if you want to drive back and forth with state, that's something that has to come out of your pocket, I think it's a good compromise.
Please, uh, Plazos?
Oh, I think, I think we should pick up the registration, but everything else as far as the food, food and water, mileage, everything else that's concerned with it, I mean, that should, that should be up to us. I just think, I also agree that it is kind of crazy, it wouldn't be part of this, and I would hope that we all could attend. I know maybe not everyone may be able to attend the way it falls. Maybe it doesn't work out for some people. I know for some of you, it might be more difficult than others. But this is, it can be a real teaching tool for us as far as new board members. I think that's something we can all learn from. So I think we should just pick up, obviously if we can afford it, the registration fee, everything else.
I've spoken to Mr. Martin, and that has been cleared. Mr. Lafon?
So, I know we have a resolution, so Ms. Fatida would be admitting to pay for registration fee only, is that...
We'll have to go back to policies, we're going to change the policy, that's my question.
Well, let me, let me ask Mr. Martin, in the past, we've deviated from that on a couple of occasions. Is this one of those occasions where we can deviate from that? Although I'm not...
Luckily, I've got board counsel here as well.
I would, I would hope that if we do deviate from it, this would be one of the rare exceptions that we would do so. Because what is the purpose of having a policy, really, if in fact, we do not follow the definition of it?
When I believe you're about to hear, this board establishes that policy, so by virtue of a vote, you establish that policy, but I'm going to defer to your counsel.
Unfortunately, I'm here, but unfortunately, I haven't looked at this yet. So you're catching me a bit, Cor. But the board does establish the policy, and the board does have the authority to vote on such things, such as this. You are, you would be deviating from the policy, but by virtue of deviation, you would be changing the policy in this one instance, for this one instance. So I would, I would, my opinion would be that you can go forward with this, and then if, if this is something that you all intend to do going forward on an annual basis, then I would suggest that you then submit it to policy procedure. If time is of the essence, in which I presume that it is at this point, I would, I would give you the advice to vote on it, to deviate on this one occasion, and then submit it to policy procedure to see if you want to have a general change of policy going forward.
Ms. Fatida?
Does that have to be stated in the, in the, in our I, in our, that we want to deviate from the policy for this one time in favor? Does that have to be stated?
I would, that, I would recommend that. So I think you're, you're on the right track here. In other words, you, the motion would be something to the effect that, make a motion to deviate from policy of whatever it is, excuse me for not knowing it, on this single occasion to permit the board to pay for the registration of board members who wish to attend the LSBA Conference in Baton Rouge for 2020. And that would be the, I think essentially be the motion.
Motion by Mr. Henry Lafon? Second by Ms. Marion Fatida. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? Mr. Schwest?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Matt, stating what you did and everything. But what you said, you know, going, referring back and making a motion to the policy and procedure, whatever that program is, is there any difference from doing that and what we just did for the gym usage? Because we didn't, we did exactly the same thing with the gym usage, and we didn't bring up a policy and procedure where BBBC or whatever it goes into, you know, so... Yeah, it is, it is essentially the same thing. I think we're just making it very clear, since you have a specific, when both policies are fairly specific, where you have a fee per usage. So I think either way, you brought this to the attention.
So it is written into the policy specific to the gym uses that it can always come to the superintendent or the board to be waived, whereas that policy presently written is not stated that. However, I do agree that it is still up to the board to adjust as a one time.
And that's something that you pointed out that I was, I would now remember. And there is an appeal to the board under the usage policy that does allow the board to waive it, and I don't, and so that would be a material difference. Thank you for pointing that out, I'll just leave them on.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. We're going to hand vote. Please, can you read the motion for...
To deviate from policy and I'll have to look at the policy number. To permit board, the board to pay for registration fee for board members to attend the LSBA Conference in 2020 in Baton Rouge. And I'll add in...
Okay, and that was motion by Mr. Lafon, second by Ms. Fatida. Everybody in favor of registration fees being paid? Thirteen yeas, nays, two nays. Motion passes. Before we move forward, Ms. Quinn is going to take her registration and assist us with that after, starting next week.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If I could ask it, how many are interested in going?
We submitted that to, we submitted that to Quinn already. We submitted that, three, you mailed it to Quinn. She asked that number. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. The past, the executive secretary and the superintendent attended?
Yes, ma'am, but that's on a separate budget, correct, Mr. Martin? Because I did check with that, thank you, Ms. Fatida, to see if we had to include anyone we were up for discussion. Thank you so much. If to finalize the superintendent selection process and take appropriate action. Do I have a motion to finalize the superintendent process? Motion by Mr. Ravenor? Motion by Mr. Bernard, second by Ms. Tina Babin. Um, before we have any discussion, I want to read, um, the proposal. I will be providing you copies of the applications after the board meeting tonight. You will be asked to sign for these, and remember that they should not be duplicated and/or shared. For the position of superintendent, which we received from Ms. Amadee's acts, we have verified that all candidates have met the criteria and certifications necessary for the position of superintendent. The candidates presently are as follows. Mr. Chris Campbell, Mr. Jared Morton, Mr. Kevin George, Dr. Charles Michel, and Dr. Michael Robbins. Our advertisement to applicants provided, the application must be postmarked and emailed by December thirty first, two thousand nineteen, and all met thy requirement. Mr. Amade did not receive any additional applications. I ask that you review the applications thoroughly and in depth. I intend to hereby announce a special board meeting to be held on Tuesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty. Oh, shoot. Jay, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty, at six o'clock, for the purpose of determining which candidate you wish to interview based upon your review of the applications. At that meeting, we can discuss how many applicants will be interviewed, and which will be invited to be interviewed, to determine the date and the time of the interviews, to determine the date, excuse me, to determine the time allowed for each interview, opening statement, questions, closing statement, and the number of questions to be asked. At that meeting, I will also propose that we schedule a special board meeting following the completion of interviews in order to vote on superintendent, provided that we are all in agreement that no additional interviews are necessary. Our original timeline to vote on superintendent was set for our February board meeting. However, based on the number of applicants, we felt it was old to make these candidates, excuse me, applicants and board discussion, we felt it was old to these candidates to do this in a timely decision. We had originally scheduled interviews the week of January thirteenth through January seventeenth, but mail delays deterred the original timeline to get the resumes and applications to you in advance of this meeting. My current plan is to recommend that interviews take place the evening of Tuesday, January sixteen, two thousand twenty, and a special board meeting to take place Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand twenty, ahead of our regularly scheduled committee meetings. Thursday the sixth. So I will read that part. My current plan is to recommend that interviews take place the evening of Thursday, January sixteen, and the special board meeting to select the superintendent take place the following Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand twenty, ahead of our already regularly scheduled committee meetings. If you have previously received opt descriptions for superintendents of LSBD, superintendent evaluation, the evaluation instrument to assist you in formulating these questions. If you need a copy of the evaluation for the superintendent, you can, um, you can ask Ms. Quinn for that, and/or Ms., Dr. Bro and myself, or Ms. Marion Fatida, who is chairman of the, um, Superintendent Evaluation Committee. Therefore, the proposal is Tuesday, January fourteenth, a special meeting at six o'clock to select the candidates that we will interview, Thursday, January sixteenth, to conduct the interviews, and then Tuesday, January twenty first, ahead of our already regularly scheduled meetings, to select the Fouch Parish's new superintendent. Is there any discussion or questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Giac?
Do we have a time on the sixteenth and a time for the twenty first?
The sixteenth would be dependent upon the number of candidates that we are interviewing.
But the early, six o'clock?
It would be scheduled for six, um, but if we're interviewing all five, that possibly would start a little earlier, and are looking at starting at six and it'd be coming a little late. So that would be determined at our next special meeting. That would be an agenda item listed on that site. And we would also schedule that meeting to announce the superintendent, uh, time ahead of our regularly scheduled committee meetings. That would be a board decision whether you wanted to start it early or again originally at six o'clock. Ms. Bernard?
Uh, I'm just thinking, so, so in other words, on the twenty first, not only would we, would we select a superintendent, but we also will have committee meetings?
Yes, sir.
Well, that, that's, that's fine, but it, it just seems that with the selection of a new superintendent, we should devote that whole time just for him and that selection. But that, that's just my opinion, I know we did that the last time, and, uh, that gave him the opportunity to have his family, and, but, um, I, I just wanted to clarify that.
And we could consider that, starting earlier or doing it after, and, or either, or we can select another date. It was very different this time, because I did take the package that they used last time with Ms. Quinn and Mr. Amade, and we went through it just like we did with, um, setting the dates and the interviews regarding that. This time, we have LSU, of course, in the national championship, which falls on the Monday, so that cuts the Monday off, so that was the Tuesday, Thursday selection, and then the following Monday is Martha Luther King holiday. So definitely, there was, um, there was a few dates in there that were for celebrations and time, you know, other times that people would, um, have dedicated to, you know, other areas. So we did look at the dates and the best possible, um, that we can come up with. Uh, we did consider not selecting the superintendent until the, um, the Thursday, but we highly took into consideration, one of your comments especially, and I, I know I can say that, in saying, looking at the time span of a superintendent. We at first said February, and that would have left two to, you know, a little over two weeks. And then if we do it to the Thursday, that's over a week, um, that we would be, um, opening that allowance. Now whether or not you want that allowance or not, we just took into account, we went back and looked at the minutes of the meeting, and took into account the board comments and what worked and what didn't work last time, or what worked better, and what we could, um, look at redefining. Ms. Thomas?
The, the weekend of the twenty first, I have a conference. So do, if you're not able to be here, can you still send your voting, or you're not eligible to vote if you're not here? Because that conference has been scheduled.
And when is the schedule?
It's from the twenty first, uh, I think I leave that Monday, and I come back that Thursday of that week.
And I know Ms. Babin also has a vacation set for the end of that week. Yes. So we, when we looked at the Thursday, we had tried to sum it up, um, for that. Um, no, if you're not here, you take one. So possibly, um, it's, it's, it's one of our duties as, as boards, and it's one of the most important decisions, as we know that we are going to make. We all voiced, um, you know, our, uh, dedication to the, so that's understandable, Ms. Thomas. Yes, sir. Mr. Schwes?
Thank you, Madam President. Is there any problem that we push this voting back to the twenty eighth? Is, is choosing the twenty eighth, that way, Ms. Thomas can be here, Ms. Babin can be here? You know, is, is there any problem that we have with that? You know, if we have all these?
I think I'm gonna be here that first week, I take that back. So it's the, this is the, the third week of January, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna be on the last week, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Just waiting, sure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schwes. Mr. Archer?
No, same as Babin as well, for that, we're my friends.
Anybody else have questions? Everybody else is okay with those dates and timelines? So the fourteen, fourteenth, the sixteenth, and the twenty first? Okay. All righty. When is that? Yes, sir?
Do we vote for this on?
Yes, sir, we will. Um, I need a motion to vote, uh... We did to, we did to finalize the superintendent process and take appropriate action. Do I need to list that in the motion, Ms. Quinn? The dates? Okay. So, um, to finalize the superintendent's electoral process for, um, January fourteenth, in his electoral process of superintendent, January sixteenth for interviews, and January twenty first to announce candidacy for the superintendents, and times will follow as such, do we, um, have a motion? Ms. Cheryl Thomas, Mr. Randy Schwes? All in favor of this motion? Hand vote?
Public comment?
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment, thank you, Mr. Amade. Public comment, I'm sorry. Now we're gonna vote? Everybody in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously? Four tentative dates of future meetings? Policy and procedure committee meeting Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand twenty. Transportation committee meeting Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand twenty. Land and Facilities Management Committee meeting Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand twenty. Insurance Committee meeting Wednesday, January twenty second, two thousand twenty. Finance Committee meeting Wednesday, January twenty second, two thousand twenty. Academics Committee Wednesday, January twenty second, two thousand twenty. Superintendent's Evaluation Committee meeting January twenty second, twenty twenty. Advisory Committee meeting Monday, February third, twenty twenty. And Regular School Board meeting Wednesday, February fifth, twenty twenty. Are there any further comments from the board? Ms. Fatida?
I just want, um, yeah, the Superintendent Evaluation Committee meeting and board members that are interested in attending, we will have the meeting at five fifteen before the regular committee meeting, so that was added, um, to that.
Thank you, Ms. Fatida, for my clarification. Is there any further discussion? If not, we will adjourn.